I looked. I couldn't, it wasn't there as an option to.
Well, not yet. It will be in a minute.
Yeah.
Right.
Perfect. All right, we're good to go, Janice, if you're.
Yep, you should be live in a matter of seconds. Waiting for it to do its thing. Okay, you should be live now.
All right, I see it.
Do you? I don't yet.
Yeah, you're live.
There it is. Okay.
All right, super. All right, thank you all. Maybe I'll just start and just kind of lay out what we got in front of us tonight. Does that sound all right for everyone?
Yep.
All right, so we've got two site plan applications, one for F H R E L L C at 235 Bayview, and then one for Tom Hedstrom at 24 Mount Batty Street. The first one, I will say, I did do a memo. I sent that memo to the planning board as well as Mark Ratner, and then I sent it to Bill Lane as a consultant for the applicants today. Just to kind of summarize where we are and what the uses are and whether or not they're permitted and what process we need to go through. So I guess maybe I'll just give a, I guess, Rosie, why don't we, before we get into it, maybe start the meeting and then you could do, take comment? That's non-agenda items.
Sure, sure. Okay, so welcome, everybody, to the October the 29th meeting of Camden Planning Board. As usual, before we get on to the agenda items, I want to ask if there are any non-agenda items that anybody wants to have addressed today? I'm not seeing any. So that being the case, let's move on to the first agenda item, which is a site plan application for 235 Bayview Street. And it's, they want to expand the currently operating eight-bedroom facility to a 12-bedroom treatment facility. Is there anything you want to say about that, Jeremy?
Yeah, I was just gonna, yeah, maybe I'll just initiate it and then I can kick it over to Bill Lane and Paul and Tom Rodman. As you said, this is for F H R E L L C 235 Bayview to expand the current operating eight-bedroom residential treatment facility to a 12-bedroom. There is no building, no construction building of any sort proposed for this project. They're simply adding four bedrooms to the site. And the reason that it's before you is because they're adding 1,000 square feet of residential space turning into non-residential space. And that is the only reason. It is a permitted use. It does, there are a couple of conditions that the facility shall have a maximum of 12 single occupancy bedrooms, which must be in buildings in existence as of January 1, 2018. That is the case on this property. And then, two, the facility must be on a single parcel of land, at least 10 acres in size, and containing a house with at least five bedrooms, all in existence before 1992. That's the case on this. It's quite something I will note, how we do things in Camden. We make things very specific for very specific properties. It's very interesting. But that said, this is a permitted use. And then I'll turn it over to, Steve Wilson and I did, when he was here, we did review the application. It does comply with all the zoning requirements. The application is complete and the applicant does have standing. So when you guys get to your motions, maybe mention those things in your motions, and I'll turn it over to Bill Lane and Paul Gibbons and Tom Rodman. And before I go there, I will say there's been no public comment. We have heard from nobody, no emails, letters, phone calls about this project at all.
Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
I have a question on this.
Yep.
I'm looking at an older ordinance, which is what I have. And it's, it says just private residential treatment facilities.
Yep.
And that was added June 12, 2018. So now I'm looking at the updated ordinance. It says private residential treatment facility provided that, one, you know, it needs 12 occupancies, two. And that says added June 13, 2018. So where did that additional language come in and how did it? How did it come into play? I don't understand it.
I can explain.
Perfect, thanks, Janie.
If that's okay. Mark, it was simply what's called a Scrivener's error. The language was in the warrant that was voted and approved in June of 18. Not all of it made it into the revised ordinance. So just the one part that you see in the old ordinance, the most, additional approved language was just added with the original approval date.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Good question, Mark, thanks. Bill, I'm gonna un, are you unmuted? Uh-oh. Where's Bill? Bill, you need to unmute yourself.
Still?
No, you're good now.
Okay, I didn't understand that even though I was using a landline, I still needed to unmute my, my app. Thank you. Tom Rodman, I just wanted to ask if you wanted to make any prefacing statements before I present the application? Tom, you're muted.
You're muted, too.
I, you hear me now, right? I don't have any statements. I'm happy to answer any questions, though. Thank you.
So that's, that's almost Zoom bingo right there with two unmutes. Thanks for your time this evening. And if I may, I'll share my screen just to present what's been submitted in the application. And can folks see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So can you see a map of, of the property?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the application is to expand the currently operating McLean Borden Cottage facility from eight bedrooms, which are in the original Borden Cottage here, to 12 bedrooms. This expansion from eight to 12 is a permissible use in the district. The facility is 13.8 acres. And it has had, so in excess of 10 acres, it has had a main building in excess of five bedrooms since the date of the stipulated in the ordinance. And no, as, essentially, without recapitulating too much, as Jeremy said, no new constructions proposed with the, with the project, and all this activity will occur in existing space. I would be happy to enumerate any of the items that we've provided in the application if you're interested or any particular questions you may have. Thanks. So I will mute if you don't have anything you'd need answered at the moment.
I would remind people to unmute themselves. Normally, I can do that, but I can't do that for some reason today. So if you can just unmute yourself and talk when you're ready.
So any planning board members, do you have any questions at this point in time?
This is Ethan. I don't have any major questions, just one. Is there additional parking required with the expansion or is that handled on-site already?
I was gonna say.
It is handled on-site at present. So adjacent to the buildings, there's, is parking at a remote parking area here. And between these two garage structures, this is all parking in through here. So we have in excess of what we need for parking.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? From anyone? No?
So I'm. I'm going over this. And the reason it's before the planning board, I mean, this is, this is, this is a permitted use. So the reason it's before the planning board is because it's turning residential space into commercial space? That's the only reason?
Correct. Residential into non-residential space, ordinance reads.
Okay.
Yeah. And a private residential treatment facility doesn't qualify as residential when you get over the, over the eight.
Well.
And that would be from Article 12, Section 1, Subsection 5. Proposals to change residential uses to non-residential uses having a total non-residential floor area of more than 1,000 square feet.
Article 12.
Section 1, 5.
Section 1, 5.
I wonder if it would help Mark to remember that the reason that this is happening is because the applicants asked for the opportunity for public hearing and review if this expansion were ever to occur. They wanted the public, otherwise it's the same, it's hard to see why it's here, but they wanted public hearings and review.
And I would add, Mark, going way back, I don't want to relitigate the whole thing that Paul and Tom had obviously been through to get to this point to have a facility like this. But Federal Fair Housing Act is, I would have, if I was here back then, I would have looked at this completely different originally under the Federal Fair Housing Act, and we wouldn't have had multiple meetings where lots and lots and lots of people came to the Opera House because it was a Federal Fair Housing Act. I would have said it would, you know, it was a single-family home in essence. And then when you, I would actually probably today make an ordinance amendment to allow Federal Fair Housing Act reasonable accommodation variance requests is how I would probably handle it today. But the way the town did is this is, this is the procedure that we did. So we got eight qualifies as a community living arrangement under, you know, state, state law when it comes to people with disabilities. And when you get up to 12, when you go more than that, you need, you do need a change of use. And this is that way, this is the mechanism the town decided to do, handle it way back when.
And Jeremy, based on that mechanism, Article 12, Section 2, you guys have already reviewed this application and as per, it meets, it checks the boxes and is approved.
Correct. I included that in the memo, which we'll include in the record, that Steve and I reviewed it for whether or not it was a permitted use, whether or not it complied with the zoning ordinance, and it does, and it was a complete application. And they have standing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do we have to review it for the various parts of site plan review?
You do, you do have to do that. There are going to be some that are not applicable, obviously. Remember, this is a public hearing, so you do need to open the hearing for public comment. We have not received any public comments. So I would encourage you to do that if the board is ready to move on, open the public hearing. Take, if any comments come in, which we won't have any, and then close that part of the hearing, then discuss, and then start entertaining some motions.
Okay, so everybody, everybody ready to do that? On the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So do we need to make a motion to open the hearing, Jeremy? Yes. So I make a motion to open the hearing. I have a second. Okay, Matt Siegel, okay, all those in favor on the board?
For a public hearing.
For a public hearing, my apologies. Okay, so all those in favor? We have Ethan, Matt, Mark. There's Jeff, okay, so myself, so that's unanimous. Okay, so. All right, sorry, guys, I'm tired. So. Sorry, I'm really blanking.
It's all right, Rosie, we got, public hearing is open. We have received no public, I'm aware of.
Okay. So in that case, we have no comments, so public hearings closed. Have a motion to close the public hearing. We have a second. Okay, Ethan, all those in favor? I, Mark, Matt, Jeff, maybe yes. Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay, so now we need to move through all the various criteria and see if these meet the criteria. So does what they're doing preserve and enhance the landscape? Is this even applicable in this case? If it's in an existing building?
Not applicable.
So not applicable? Okay, do we need to make a motion to say that it's not applicable or do we just ignore it?
I think you need to make a motion, yeah. I'll make the motion. It's a, I move that the project that's proposed does not affect criteria number one, preserve and enhance the landscape, because there's no additional construction.
Okay, we have a second with Matt. All those in favor? Matt, I, Ethan, Jeff, yes, okay, so that's unanimous. Erosion control. I wouldn't think that was applicable. Somebody wants to make a motion?
You're on a roll, Ethan.
Yeah, I'm on a roll. So I would, I move that approval criteria number two, erosion control, is not impacted in this development as proposed, or this project as proposed, because there's no addition, no new construction.
Second.
So we have a second. Matt Siegel, okay, all those in favor? I, Mark. Myself, Ethan, and we have Jeff. So that's unanimous. All right, do you want to keep going, Ethan?
I'm on a roll.
You are?
Let's see. I move that approval criteria number three, relationship with the proposed building to the environment and neighboring buildings is not applicable because there's no new construction.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
That, Mark, and all those in favor on the board? I have an eye, or I have a yes from Matt. Yes from Ethan, Jeff, myself. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, keep going if you would, sir.
I move that approval criteria number four, vehicular access, parking and circulation. The applicant has demonstrated that they meet this requirement based on the expansion, but the parking available already on-site.
I will second that, Ethan.
Fantastic. All those in favor? Myself, Mark, Matt, Ethan, just, and Jeff. So that's unanimous. You're doing great. I think you should keep going.
You know, I'm gonna take a nap the next one. So I move that approval criteria, surface water drainage, number five, surface water drainage is not applicable due to the fact that there is no new construction.
Do we have a second? Jeff, all right, look at that. All right, so everybody in favor? I, or hands up, Jeff?
Aye.
Ethan? Sorry, Matt. We have an eye from Mark. Sorry, I'm kind of bouncing screens. Was that a yes from Mark? Sorry, I missed that, Mark. Yes, okay, so that's unanimous. Yep. What's next?
Approval criteria number six, public utilities. I move that there is no unreasonable burden on the sewers and storm drains, even though in expansion, these are already residential or occupied units. And therefore, no, the project satisfies those criteria.
Okay, do I have a second? Matt Siegel, so you're next to me on my screen, Matt, that's why I keep seeing you.
Gallery view, I'll just keep going.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
On the board? I, Mark, Ethan, Jeff, so unanimous. Okay. Could you keep going, Ethan? You're doing great.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Um, let's see, I move that approval criteria number seven, special features of development is not applicable, given that there's no new development and no exposed machinery or storage areas involved with the expansion.
Okay, do I have a second? I have a second. Jeff, fantastic. Okay, so can I have everybody in favor?
Aye.
Jeff, Ethan, I, so I'm bouncing across here. Do we have Mark? Yes. Fantastic. And Matt, lovely. We're getting there, Ethan.
Approval criteria number eight, exterior lighting, not applicable. No additional exterior lighting, as far as I know, related to the project and no new construction.
Do I have a second? Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Myself, Matt, Ethan, Mark, I'm sure Jeff's in there somewhere, yes, wonderful. So that's unanimous. Nine.
Number nine. Criteria number nine, I move the criteria number nine, emergency vehicle access, again, not applicable in that there's no.
I don't know if it's not applicable, but it's previously established, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, I think that is a fair assessment.
I think that's fine, yeah. I was, I was flying through it so fast, I forgot to think about it that way. But I appreciate that, Matt. Yeah, I think that number nine moved that number nine, emergency vehicle access, previously established and not affected by the expansion.
Thank you. We have a second in Matt, yes, and all those in favor on the board? I, Mark, Matt, Ethan, Jeff. So that's unanimous. Thank you.
I will move that number 10, special criteria, not applicable, no warms, tears, et cetera, and no development in this project.
Okay, I guess we need a second for that. Mark and all those in favor? I, Matt, Ethan, Mark. Jeff, that covers myself. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, we need to, 11?
Yep, 11, design standards. I believe it's not applicable. And again, no new development.
Okay, so I have a second. Mark, fantastic. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ethan, Matt, slight running an auction. Do I have a yes from Mark?
Yeah.
Jeff, okay, unanimous. Okay, and last but not least?
I was gonna say that.
I'm sorry, you can.
Last but not least. I move number 12, overlay design standards for the B O Z, not applicable, because again, no new development or landscaping.
Okay, do I have a second?
I would just say that we're not in a buzz, so it doesn't.
We're not in a buzz, yeah, right. I was gonna say that, too.
Do I have a second? Jeff, yes, okay, all those in favor on the board? I have Mark, Ethan. Matt, yes. I get everybody, I think so. Yeah, so that's unanimous. Okay, so given that we've approved all of those, I make a motion that we approve, oh, Jeremy.
Just a couple of things before you, I think you're gonna probably say to make a motion to approve site plan application.
They're going too fast.
Yeah, well, remember, we need to find, you guys need to make a motion that the application's complete. The applicant has standing and that there's no conflict aboard. It happened already, but no big deal.
Can that all be part of one motion?
I second that motion.
Go for it.
Do you want to make the motion, Mark?
Pardon me?
Do you want to make the motion? Somebody on the board has to make it, not, not Jeremy.
Yeah, well, I.
You find the application complete, they have standing, and there's no conflicts.
That should probably be actually confirmed by everybody saying they don't have.
Don't have conflicts there. Break it up into two, Mark. Standing ends the complete application.
Okay, I make a motion that the applicant has standing and that they have submitted a complete application.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor on the board? I, Mark, Ethan, myself, Matt, Jeff. Okay, so yes to that. So now we need another one.
Well, I think, Rosie, you need to check with the board whether we have.
Conflict.
Conflict.
Does anybody have any conflicts?
No.
No.
Is this a conflicts of interest?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so that's, we've, we've, everybody said no, including myself.
That's good to me. Why don't you move on to site plan application?
So we're voting now to approve the entire piece, right? So I make a motion to approve the site plan application for 235 Bayview Street. Can we keep it that simple?
As, as proposed.
As proposed. Do I have a second?
Second.
The second and Ethan, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have a Jeff, Ethan, Matt. Mark, okay, that's unanimous. So.
Now, if you would just say that you've based your decisions on the information presented to you. Ethan knows how this one goes, don't you, Ethan?
Do you want me to bundle that in with Rosie's motion, Janie?
Yes.
Sure, yes, because and we have or whatever.
Right, yeah, I think that's the way to do it. So I'll move that the board approves the, what was it, 235 Bayview?
35. F H R E L L C at 235 Bayview Street.
235 Bayview Street application as submitted and based upon the representation and information provided by the applicant.
And me.
And Jeremy.
Thank you.
And based on the review criteria of the site plan review.
Yep, and based on the criteria of the review of the site plan review.
Do you get all that, Janie?
Yes, I'll do, I'll take care of it.
There's enough words in there somewhere.
Enough review words.
Yeah, right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? On the board? Have I, Matt, myself, Mark, Ethan, Jeff, so that's unanimous. So, thank you, gentlemen. Your application's been approved. Do we need to come down and sign anything for all of this stuff, Jeremy?
You will, yes.
Okay.
We'll, we'll arrange it with you guys to come down and sign. We'll, we'll arrange it with you guys to come down and sign it. Yeah.
Okay, but thank you Bill and Tom and Paul coming down, yep.
Thanks guys.
Hey, thank you. I don't know if I can be heard, but I just want to thank you for this speedy process.
Thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the facility.
Thank you.
Yes.
Little bit different than last time, that's for sure.
A little bit.
You better leave quick before some people change their minds here.
That's right. We're out of here.
Yeah, exactly. Go on, get going while the going's good.
Hold on, I think Mark wants to say something. Mark, you want to say something?
Hey.
Mark, you're up.
Okay, well. Uh, yes, you can. Well, I can tell you that two weeks ago, when Kim and I had dinner with Sarah, we told her we would support her, so.
Mark, Mark, you're.
I think he was talking to someone else.
It could have been worse.
Could have been a lot worse. All right.
Right. Hang on, Paul. Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Jeannie.
Hey. All right. That was funny.
It's G rated show, Jeremy, G rated.
Better one happen in Bangor High School Zoom conferences. I don't know if you saw.
Do you want to know?
Oh, boy. All right, so moving on. Next application before you is for Tom Hedstrom. Bill, I don't see Tom in the, in the area, is he not joining us?
You're muted again, Bill.
Pick up the phone.
Bill. Bill, are you there?
He wants for a second.
You're there now.
Okay. I swear I'm not pushing the buttons to make it go away. I, my understanding was Tom was gonna join, but I can, I'm happy to present.
Okay, yeah, I don't see him trying to jump in, so we'll just keep moving. How's that?
Yeah.
Bill, you need to either hold the phone or turn up the volume, we can barely hear you.
I can do this.
That works.
Okay.
Maybe I'll start this again, Rosie, just kind of lay the land a little bit. Again, this is a project for Tom Hedstrom at 24 Mount Batty Street for the construction of a 40 by 80 one-story shop building, driveway, parking area, and gravel work yard. Properties within the Business River District, and is wholly within the Shoreland Zone. The use is permitted in the, in the district, as well as in the Shoreland Zone. The applicants before you, due to Article 12, Site Plan Section 1.1, Proposal for New Construction of a Non-Residential Building, Structure Having a Total Area Floor Area, Total Floor Area of More Than 1,000 Square Feet, and also Section 1.3, Proposals to Page Strip Remove Earth Material From or Grade Areas of More Than 10,000 Square Feet in a Five-Year Period. My memo says Fire Year Period, so sorry about that. The applicant came before you in a pre-conference application, what, a month ago? And then we have since had, we did do a site visit, those were coordinated into different site visits to accommodate the planning board members. And then, as we get along, Rosie, as maybe you guys discussed, I will say what was discussed, kind of laid it out in the memo with Bill Lane and the planning board members, we tried to make sure that both of those site visits, the same things were discussed. So we looked at the location of the building, the extent of filling, and we talked about, as I recalled, what the exterior of the building would look like. And that, for the most part, those are the three, I think, primary things that we really discussed. Outside of that, I would, I guess, let. Jeannie, do you think we should do anything procedurally about the site visits, site walks?
Um, yes, I believe that you need to stay two attended on which day, and Mark was gonna be the observer to see if everything was shared the same way.
Talking about me?
Yes, you. Um, I don't remember the dates off the top of my head, I guess I'll go back and do, does anyone remember the dates?
The fifth and the eighth, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fifth and the eighth.
So for the record, on the fifth, in attendance was Rosie, Mark Segenthaler, Jeff Senders, myself, and Bill Lane. And then on the eighth, was, I'm sorry, Tom Hedstrom was there as well on that day. And then on the eighth was Ethan, Matt Siegel, and Mark Segenthaler sat in on the next one, along with Bill Lane, and I believe Tom probably was there at the same time.
Correct.
And can I get a confirmation, Mark, that everything was discussed for the most part, what we just, what I mentioned? Extent of fill, location of building, et cetera?
Yes, everything was the same.
Okay, perfect. Just want to do a quick motion, everyone hear that background, and wanted someone want to do some sort of motion there?
Maybe that you were, all voting members have attended a sidewalk and are eligible to participate in the review?
Perfect. Ethan?
I'll make the motion.
Mark's got it.
Yeah, he was there.
Ready, Mark?
No, I thought I did.
All five voting members were present and eligible to participate in this evening's review.
Correct.
So moved.
That was my motion.
Rosie, can we get a second from someone?
Yeah. Also, so can I make a motion that all five voting members were present and eligible to participate? No, eligible.
To participate in today's review? Yep.
Are eligible to participate. Do we have a second?
All right, I'll second it.
No. All those in favor?
I don't know, subject for object normally works for, yes, but, okay.
Matt, Ethan. Jeff. Get everybody. Mark, okay.
And then, Rosie, maybe before we keep going, I would like to say about, I sent out some emails, and I did send over to Janice earlier. She has the most current site plan along with the memo. There were a couple of small issues, very minor in nature, and I just want the board to acknowledge that we're reviewing the plan that was submitted yesterday. The only changes on the plan, after reviewing the project a little more in depthly, I identified this week, I identified a buffer issue, or screening issue between the site and the mobile home park. And that is that the parking spaces that were closest to Mount Batty Street on the, what is that, the southern side or eastern side of the building, along the mobile home park, if you were coming around the building, then pulling out on Mount Batty, those parking spaces were too close to the property line and did not provide the requisite screening area, which is a, I think a 10-foot area of a buffer. So instead of having 90-degree parking at that location, they pulled that back. So it's actually parallel parking in that location, and now they're providing for the 10-foot required screening. And there's notes on the plan that say that they will supplement, whatever needs to be supplemented in order to meet the ordinance requirements. If you remember that area, there's vegetation and trees there, there's shrubs, there's some overstorey trees, there's, you know, some understory trees already there, so. They will supplement if they do not meet that, the current ordinance requirements. And remember, the buffer screening area is a certain number of trees per 100 feet, so we just take that down, that whole line. So that, that's not a problem, that's been addressed. And then there was an item, it's really relation to the floodplain about, that they will construct. It's in the floodplain ordinance under the review section that you guys have, this real couple of small pieces. And there was a note added to the signature block as required by the ordinance that indicates that. Floodplain is. That the, that the, I don't remember exactly what it says, but that construction, structure constructed in accordance with the zoning ordinance, including, and the floodplain ordinance, I think it says floodplain, I think you meant to say floodplain on there, Bill, I think it says zoning ordinance on that note. So outside of that, I think that's the only issue. But those were the changes proposed. There was also a note that the sign for Tom Hedstrom is out in the town right-of-way. So we did have them make a note that they will reset that with, onto their property and outside the right-of-way. And then there are some planters that are further down the road, closer to the street, or closer to the river, as you're heading towards the river, that are actually out in the right-of-way, and there's a note that those planters will be removed. You know, we really ought not have sign structures or planters out in the town right-of-way without some sort of license agreement, and really, they need to just get back up onto the property. Those are the extent of the changes, so I just want you to maybe make an acknowledgement that we are reviewing this most currently revised plan. And then we can let Bill go through his summary of the project.
Okay, can I make a motion that we are now reviewing this most currently revised plan?
And Rosie, is there a specific date, Jeremy, to that plan? I'm trying to find.
Yes.
Good question.
October 28th, revised on October 28th.
I think Jeremy sent it to us yesterday, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah.
It does say, Planning Department Comments 10/28/20 is on the plan.
Okay, so most current revised plan based on the plan, so 10/28/2020.
Yep.
Do we have a second? Yes, Matt, second. All those in favor? Yep, I, Ethan, Matt, flipping through. We have Mark, yes. Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay, so in that case, can we hand it Jeff? You're just saying I, or do you have a question? He's just waving. Hi guys, okay. Can we, can Bill, can Bill go ahead and?
I can, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, uh, oh, did you want to determine the plan complete before I present, or you want to wait on that, or?
I'm sure, so I, I guess I will just make a note that, that we did find that the plan is complete and is in general conformance with the zoning ordinance requirements.
Okay.
Someone want to make that motion?
General conformance?
I'm sorry, conformance with the ordinance, I'm just going here, Mark.
All right.
It's with the ordinance.
I'll make a motion, the application is complete and in conformance with the zoning requirements. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mark, yes, wonderful. Okay, all those in favor? On the board, I, Ethan, Mark. Matt. Jeff has suddenly gone dark, I'm sure he's waving, there he is, okay. Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay. So I think, I think you can, it's, the floor is yours, Bill.
Well, thank you, and as before, I'll share my screen to start with, if that's okay with folks. And thanks for your time this evening. As earlier, we have been before you for a pre-application for this project for Tom at 24 Mount Batty Street, and then been through site walks with the board. So Tom operates his electrical business from here, and this is also his residence. It's a 1.14 acre parcel on the west side of Mount Batty Street adjacent to the Guineacook River. As noted, all of that portion of the property that is developed is within the Shoreland Zone at that location, save for a very little bit out at the very southeastally corner of the property. So effectively, all of the properties in the Shoreland Zone. This adjacent to the river, there is a flood zone established by FEMA at the 107 elevation contour, that is this red line on the plan.
Here's my bill. You need to share your screen, Bill? Can you zoom that?
I'm not.
I see it.
I see it, but it could be bigger.
Okay, I'll go in a little bit on just the map part and leave the plan notes behind.
Perfect.
How's that for folks?
Perfect, yep.
Okay, so, yeah, catch a little more of the suddenly limit. So as noted, there are wetlands on the property that have been delineated by our wetland scientist. And the property was previously developed with this, this building that Tom operates his business from and is his residence. There is an existing septic system in the rear yard of the property, and that begins the limit of the existing fill slope gradually sliding down to the toe of slope. We have made application with DEP for Natural Resources Protection App, application to place fill in these wetlands to the limits shown on the plan. For this fill slope extension that would go out, there's a sediment barrier indicated below that work. In this application, this proposed building, this 40 by 80 structure is also tradesman shop, so it's no, substantially no change of use, it's just, it's new commercial space or new non-residential space, subject to planning board review, as well as the fill quantity is subject to planning board review. This building is not served by water or sewer, it is proposed to be powered. And fairly recently, we were, we were provided from Tom some hand-drawn elevations of the building that I shared, and I'm not sure if the board received them.
I did, I did send them.
Okay. So the general premise, as Tom has described, is a building similar construction character to the existing building that's there with metal siding and some translucent panels higher up on the sidewalls of the building for natural lighting and very limited and controlled exterior lighting in character with what's placed on this existing building, which is largely sopits and entrances. There's no other, there's no freestanding exterior lighting proposed other than the building-mounted soffit and eve type and doorway entrance lighting. As noted, there is a, adjacent to Mount Batty Street, an existing sign which was, which is here, which will be moved back. And these planters, as I understand from Tom, are actually now removed. Those were a legacy of the boundary survey we were given to begin the project with some time ago. And so this new fill area, in addition to supporting access to the building, will have those parallel parking spaces that Jeremy mentioned on the south side of the property, and additional 90-degree spaces on the north side of the building, and behind that, a small gravelled yard for materials largely related to his existing operation, and as evidenced by the site, site walk, there are some durable materials that are stored outside. And those will be placed in that rear area, which is going to be more screening from the adjacent properties and certainly from the street, that is now the case. And that, I believe, so no change to water, no change to sewer from existing onsite wastewater disposal and existing water service from main water. No utilization of utilities other than power and telecommunications in the new building, so no burden on public utilities. As Jeremy mentioned, we are in the floodzone, so you will be reviewing that we will adhere to the floodzone standards, the building is elevated well above the 107 elevation, proposed finished floor of 112.5. And all slopes will be stabilized. If there's items within the application that are of interest to you, please do let me know, otherwise I won't, I won't. won't rehash what's in that package other than to kind of just go through what was submitted and supported the application. The application letter addressing the performance standards, tax map deed for right title and interest purposes, list of abutters, location map, an aerial photo and the base map that we worked from, from Patriot Land, and then site plans and details that show conformance with the erosion segmentation control measures, among other things. So I'll weight the board's interest and happy to answer any questions you've got.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. At this point, I'd ask the board if they have any questions.
Bill, I, I saw a note there. I mean, initially, you weren't sure of the parking in the driveway, whether it was going to be paved or gravel. I saw a note that said you plan on paving it. Is that correct?
I believe the, the plan though calls for this to be new reclaimed asphalt.
Paved or unpaved is what the question I had as well.
I think one area says, one area says reclaimed asphalt, and maybe that's existing, that's out front. And then out back, out back, it points to this area and it calls it proposed paved or reclaimed asphalt for drive and parking. So it's, it's proposed to be either one.
Right, yeah, the expectation at this point from Tom's indications is that it would be reclaimed, but it would be paved or reclaimed. More likely reclaimed at this point.
And Mr. Bill, from an engineering point of view, does that in terms of runoff and absorption and permeable, does it make a huge difference from an engineering side?
Not, not of consequence. When, when assessing these surfaces, even a well-traveled gravel area is treated by DEP and most regulators is as the same kind of impervious.
Can I ask you, Bill, there was in the email exchange, Jim Byer referred to something as tier one and L5 number? Can you just clarify what that whole conversation was about, something about a tier one from the Department of, the DEP?
Yep, the department regulates wetlands under the Natural Resources Protection Act. These are not wetlands that are associated by vegetation type or frequency of inundation or standing water with the adjacent waterway. So the, the inherent categorization of them, because they're in the shoreline zone, is wetlands of special significance, which would not be permitted to be reviewed under a tier permit procedure unless the department went to the site, observed them, which in this case was done by Jim Byer, and determined that they were not wetlands of special significance, other than by virtue of their presence in a shoreline zone. So he determined that we could secure a tier one process for seeking approval to amend, to modify these wetlands by filling them. And that simplified the process from a full permit to a tier one permit. So basically, it's the amount of administrative review that occurs during the permitting. It doesn't change the fact that we need a permit, we still need a permit, and we're applying for the permit at this time.
So and, and Bill, to, to clarify that, a tier one permit is just, you, you file for the permit and it's, it's a streamlined version, like you said, and, and I don't, I forgot what the timeframe was, but if you don't hear of any, if you hear nothing back within, was it six weeks, you can go, just go ahead with the pro, the project?
No, we need to secure a dispositive answer and approval from them in, still with the tier permit. Any amount of wetland impacts to those types of wetlands that are not categorized as special significance in excess of 4,300 square feet would require a permit. So stepping into that realm, if we're not talking about special significance permits, the very first level of review is tier permit, so it's from 4,300 to 15,000 square feet. Jeremy, you're on board?
Yeah, I'm on board with that and I, I concur with that. So Mark, generally, anyone can fill up to, like Bill, Bill just mentioned the 4,300 square feet. If you've got wetlands on your lot over there on, on, on Mountain Street, you could fill 4,300 square feet of those wetlands unless you were in a subdivision that there was wetland impacts already. But if you're on your vacant, you know, your existing lot, 4,300 square feet of, of wetland alteration, you can do on your own without a permit, as long as it's not a wetland of special significance. Once you get over 4,300 square feet, then you need a tier one permit, and that's what they're going through. So what I think what Bill was trying to say about this site is technically, these wetlands would inherently be determined wetlands of special significance because they're within the shoreline zone. DEP, they do field determinations all the time. As you can imagine, there's wetlands similar to this one where there's just like a little, you know, a depression in, in the, in the land within the shoreline zone, even though that they are not hydrologically connected with that resource, they still fall under that classification of a wetland of special significance. So that's what Jim Byer did and came out here. He determined that it did not qualify as a wetland of special significance. Therefore, you can go through the tier one process. If he determined that it is a wetland of special significance like this, if, if this was all part of the river in essence, he would have said, no, it's not a wetland of specials, or it is a wetland of special significance and you need a full NRPA permit to do that. That, that's correct, Bill.
Right, and there are a couple of additional ways you can stumble into special significance if it's mapped as significant wildlife habitat of some sort. These conditions don't apply at this property, just happens to be that there's this low-lying ground adjacent to the river that is not connected and it's categorizable as a forested wetland. So we needed that permission from Jim Byer to use the simpler permitting process, but we definitely need a permit. We've identified this 10,700 some square foot impact is what we need to do the project and we're expecting to receive a permit for it. So the way that we've approached this generally is when you make findings that you might add a condition under site plan review that NRPA permit be required before this project could be, could be built.
And so thanks, Bill, that's helpful. But in terms of procedures, so Rosie, as Bill was just saying, that we want to make sure that our findings would be, and again, correct me if I'm mistaken, Jeremy, but contingent upon DEP approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Yep. Any other questions?
I would make just a comment. I know you talk about sediment barrier, Bill, but you do with an arrow, and I've seen silt fence out on site. I would recommend that the silt fence get, gets removed that's out there on site and you guys put in erosion control mix, wood waste, bark mulch, berm or whatever, because, you know, I've, I've seen some of that fence out there and it is not doing what it is intended to do. So I recommend that the board ask, ask them to remove the silt fence reference and install wood waste, bark mulch, erosion control mix on the site instead of the silt fence berm.
And Jeremy, and again, I'm not an engineer, is that in addition to the Curlex?
So the Curlex, the Curlex would be erosion control that is on the, on the bank, making sure that that bank is stabilized because you're going to have sheet flow coming over to that bank.
Exactly.
Flowing down. So the silt, the wood waste, bark mulch, berm would be, as the plan shows, at the base of that, at the toe of that slope, would contain anything that came off of that site.
So it's an additional absorption layer, basically.
Correct.
And is this the time that, Bill, can you also talk a little bit about the riprap? And again, it's technology and is that, is that, again, I don't know industry standard for erosion control and again, getting away from the sediment and the, the silt fence, this idea of erosion control. And I see the riprap in the build with the fill and the large rocks that you were going to be building, basically putting a barrier? I mean, again, I just need a little explanation and the question about riprap. Is that something that's industry standard? Is that something that is common? Is that unusual for the amount of flow that's coming down and right there? Yeah, where you're?
So at, at this location, this product is best, that, that's the area that you're interested in, Matt?
Well, that's the, that's the Curlex if I'm not mistaken. And then, so there are two issues. One is the Curlex, which I think Jeremy just mentioned in terms of adding to that layer on the berm and adding the additional absorption. And then the second bit of information would be right on the river's edge where there's riprap in the field and it's going in there.
Right, so that, that is a stabilization measure that we're proposing here. And we've actually secured from the town permitting for that administrative review at the town level for this activity. But that's, that's essentially stabilizing an unstable short bluff that is losing material and trees are starting to lean and the ground adjacent to the bank is sloughing. So that is, that stone riprap treatment is a, is a fairly straightforward and conventional means of stabilizing.
And just for point of clarification, Jeremy, is that a separate issue than the consideration?
We talked about this the last time. Permitted already. That is not under your review today.
I just wanted to clarify that once again.
And I, I would say, I mean, you can see riprap used all over the place. You know, it's used on shorefront properties, especially on lakefront properties where you get a lot of wave action from wind and ice, ice, you know, erosion that hits banks, you get a lot of riprap. Those are permitted pretty easily by the DEP. And so it is a standard. I mean, there's different, different alternatives that you could use, but really, you know, there, there would be some geotextile fabric behind the rock. It's not going to be just rocks sitting up against soil. Because what would happen then is that soil is going to get undermined and wash out anyway and the rocks would end up rolling down the river probably. So in this case, there is filter fabric, geotextile fabric behind the rocks to, to protect the soils.
And again, just because the, the public record and as we discussed last meeting, and also during our site walk, I just want to make clarification about who is handling which element of the project and distinguish them. So thanks, Bill. That is a great job in terms of separating out the riprap and the erosion control as a separate entity from the sediment that, that you just discussed, Jeremy, the Curlex and the additional barrier for absorption for additional runoff that will occur from the gravel, from the, whether it's pavement or crushed. And then again, the, the platform with a large amount of fill is going to be the, the actual building.
Yep. And I'm, I, to, to just reinforce Jeremy's point, I'm, I'm all in favor of the erosion control mixed berms. Those are a real, a very appropriate treatment and very frequently utilized, so we're happy with that.
And I will say that we will be on the site, once they do start doing this work, to ensure that erosion control is functioning as intended throughout the project. So you can be assured that we'll, we will be out there, making sure it's done right.
Okay, so we should be able to address that as item number two, erosion control, when we go through these line item.
Yeah, Rosie, remember, a couple of things to do, right? Completeness and all that. If we haven't done that yet, but we also need to open a public hearing. We have not heard any public comment from the public on this at all, so.
Yeah, are we done with basic questions from the board so that we can open up the public hearing?
Actually, Rosie, I do have a question.
Yes.
This is Ethan. What I'm, what I'm looking at, and you know, I, I understand the project and I am generally definitely supportive of, of the idea that, that Tom be able to use his property in this way. But, but I am a little bit concerned about the, the nature of the, the removal and fill and the disruption of the, of the, of the landscape. And I'm really almost focusing less on erosion control, which is important, and I think we've discussed a bit. But I, I would like to be put at ease more as the criteria, number one, preserving and enhancing the landscape. We've got a lot of tree removal. And we have disturbance of soil. And then vegetation, and I know that these are sort of not, as you said, significant, wetlands of special significance, and I accept that determination. But they are wetlands, they are shoreline. And my biggest concern is, you know, it does go to erosion to some degree when you remove trees, you remove what stabilizes the, the ground and prevents erosion. And so I just, what I, you know, not that I'm opposed to the project, but I really would like to be able to read, number one, make a motion on it and feel like that's what I really believe. And I, at this moment in time, I'm not absolutely convinced that that's how I feel. And Bill, can you address that?
Sure. Jeremy, did you want to say something first? I thought, so you might.
Yeah, and maybe just a couple of comments. And I, I sent it in, into an email to, to everyone today and Bill, I copied you on it as well. It was, you know, the, it's really, I, I understand that it's the shoreline zone, so I think people need to understand that shoreline zoning, right, there's the state minimum guidelines for shoreline zoning. Within there, there are districts similar to zoning districts that, you know, they call them limited commercial or residential or industrial. So because you're adjacent to a lake or the ocean or a river in this case, the DEP contemplates in shoreline zoning that that we have existing development and we want some development to happen along resources. All of our towns are built along rivers, lots of towns are built along lakes, and lots of those areas are commercial, industrial areas. A lot of times with no vegetation at all. You look at downtown along the McGunta Cook, all of that is in the shoreline zone and we have zero, you know, vegetation in, in, on a lot of lots. So this lot is zoned BR, which is similar to what the tannery is and which is similar in the exemptions when you look at lot coverage and ground coverages in the shoreline zone that we have in the B1, which is our downtown zone. So it's very different than is if you were next to this or up the river from this or along the lake where we have residential zoning districts and those standards for lot coverage, vegetation removal is much more strict than it is in the BR zone and the B1 zone. I just, I think that's helpful for people to know. And I just want, would just like to comment about, before Bill goes into it, and I, I hear you, Ethan, I think it's important just to, shall be preserved in its, its natural state insofar as practical by minimizing tree removal. So there's an understanding that a project is going to have to do some, remove some trees. I mean, if you had a vacant site that was just treed and it was a, you got a site plan came in for a commercial industrial project and it was an existing forested site, you know, you got to build something on the site, right? You got to remove trees in order to pull a project off. And I'm just throwing that out there because it does say insofar as practical.
And I, and I'm aware of that language, but we, we are coming in under, under two separate criteria where first we have a, a total floor area of more than 1,000 feet and then we have, you know, the removal of earth and materials.
Yeah, no, I get it. I'm just, I'm just wanting you to, and maybe, Bill, you can go on from there. I just wanted to explain shoreline zone is different from commercial zones to residential zones or resource protection zones. Very different.
So I'd just like to add in, in here a little bit there, Ethan, to ease your mind, if you recall on the site walks, Tom, you know, when he spoke about the trees and the growth around there, he was very aware of what was there and, and everything pointed to that he wanted to preserve as much as he could possibly preserve.
Yeah, I do remember that. Thank you, Mark. I, you know, I do also remember him saying that virtually all the trees were going down. You know, so, you know, it just, it's largely just due to the scale, the size of the building. If you look at the, at the, at the drawing there, there is not much room there to preserve trees when you're using, when you're taking up that much, that much space. It's going right down to the, to the edge of the property.
It's, it's a fair point. I think that I think that we do have the dynamism of the the two issues. The performance standards do say preserve and enhance the landscaping to the extent practical and feasible, given the objectives of the project generally. But here in the BR, we are looking at a permissible ground coverage or building coverage of 70% of lot area. And this project doesn't anywhere near approach that. All of our activities, well, you know, all of our impervious is behind the 75 foot setback line that I'm delineating here. And as we transition from here, we go over this slope, which is stabilized with a grass surface that's going to grow in through that core lex. And we're going to transition into natural ground covers in this area. And most of this is maintained as lawn by Tom, but there are quite a substantial amount of specimen trees through here. And that's part of the driver for the stabilization project is to keep those edge trees from going away any further. So I do believe that Tom does represent and speak for himself saying that he is a steward of this land and he's looking to try and keep things naturalized and in a in a park-like setting. And it is his home.
Part of that approval criteria does also speak about when the project's completed, landscaping shall be designed and planted to define, soften or screen the appearance of off-street parking areas from the public right away and abutting properties and or structures. So we I will say that we are enhancing that buffer from what you had the last plan, right? We've expanded that and there are some notes on here and they included some more vegetation. So I will say, Ethan, that we are going to make them meet that screening requirement. And if if we go out there and there are not enough specimen specimens or shrubs, they'll be planting them to meet that requirement before he gets a C of O for the project.
Great. Thank you, guys, for indulging me. And again, it's just it's from a perspective of wanting to make sure that when we do make motions that we really do believe what we're saying and it's not just a rubber stamp. And that's that's really what I needed to hear. So thank you.
And then Ethan, to your point, I agree. And Bill, to, I mean, my issue as well, Ethan, was with the erosion control and the sediment runoff and just again, was not interested in rubber stamping that with the amount of fill that's going in here and the amount of new surface area. But again, if you are authorized and saying in terms of runoff, that it's not a significant change and will not cause a significant erosion based on this construction. Again, apart from the large amount of fill, I have to, again, to your professional experience, say, okay, then that is how I will see it, that it will not cause a significant runoff and or erosion.
Right, that's the objective of those treatments that we're building into the plan is that by creating enough separation back and and the stabilized slope to begin the transition to naturalized conditions that we're supporting the prevention of any erosion. And compacted gravel shouldn't be moving and another themselves.
Can I ask something about the 800 pound gorilla that has nothing to do with this project? I mean, the idea that you're building such a structure in something that's designated as a flood zone? And I again, just it's not whether we're going to approve that or not. But is that not an unusual request? I mean, this, I'm just curious. I mean, again, it has nothing to do with the actual building. It's just that you're in a flood zone. I mean, is that a common thing? Will people will do this kind of fill in the in something that's designated as a flood zone?
Yep, fairly frequently. And then if you look at the coastline, we have a number of development projects in Camden that are are building in flood zones as well.
I mean, we're just we're looking at a lot, Ethan, to the point where we're talking at Lyman Morse as well. I mean, we're just looking at a lot of projects that are starting to go up. And again, it has nothing to do with voting this up or down. It's just, it's kind of an 800 pound gorilla, a big picture of this whole thing that people are building in flood zones. And I'm just like, holy cow.
Is it the case that that you're actually filling to above the flood zone? Is that right, Bill?
Yeah, they're four, five, five feet above. So 107 versus 112, isn't that the the difference?
Yeah, 107 versus 112.5 is the finished floor of this building. So yeah, when when we're on the other end of this project, I would expect that what Tom will do is pursue a letter of map amendment and this portion of filled land will not be in the flood zone.
Copy that. Thank you, Bill. I appreciate it a lot.
Good points. And I will say they are getting a floodplain permit from from my office, from from me for this work as well, separate from your review. There's a floodplain permit that they need. I need to do a floodplain permit. And then it's a minor flood hazard development permit that they need to submit. And they need to submit a bunch of information indicating that this this work's not going to increase flood levels somewhere else. I mean, there's, there's other things that are happening here, Matt, that just aren't kind of under your purview. But it will be permitted through the flood hazard ordinance. And we are going to be well of well above that one foot above base flood elevation for the finished floor elevation. And like you said, they're likely will do a Loma letter of map amendment to tweak the flood floodplain. And we'll have a new map, at least in this area.
Again, thank you, guys, for the time and the professional.
And I know he's got one foot out the door, but does our resident expert, Mr. Senders, have anything to add on this?
No, no, I think it looks good. A lot of the trees that are on site, if you want to remember, are like Norway maples and stuff. I mean, a lot of the canopy that's going to be lost, there wasn't much value to it. And this is a zone that we do allow this use. And then, as I said before, when you have a wetlands, grains on the wetlands, there's actually not much more absorption unless there's a storage factor involved. So if there was like a little pond on the site and they're filling the pond, to me, that would be a red flag. But here we have a wetlands that when we're on the site, it's really just grass and some shrubs. There wasn't any habitat. There's no salamanders or anything like that. So I think Bill's done a great job here. This is a tricky project. There's not much space to work with. And Tom, you know, he needs to get this storage building in. And this is about as good as far as it can be. The vegetated buffer between the neighbor's residence and his building is a tricky one because you want to balance. You don't want to cut down too many trees, but you also want a nice evergreen kind of hedge road to block it. And, you know, so I commented the Mugo pine isn't native, but it's used all the time. And it's a fine plant and so is the dwarf spruce. So, you know, I think I think Bill's done a good job with this.
Thanks, Jeff. That means a lot.
Yeah, it does. Thank you, Jeff. But Ethan, can you get Jeff for his birthday, a microphone? I know he's leaving the whole, maybe it's a going away present.
That's a golden parachute.
Know what you're getting there, Senders. I'll chip in 20 bucks.
And then, and then, you know, I don't want to keep dragging this show out. But, you know, Rosie, I want to get your aesthetic design input on this building.
It's it matches. It's great.
Check for me.
There. So at this point, can we, do we need to find the application complete and make a motion to do that, Jeremy? Or can we make a motion to open the public?
I would do a motion to do those things.
You already did. They already did.
Perfect.
Okay, well, it was noted. Okay, so can we, can I make a motion to open the public hearing? Yeah. So Ethan's a second. Okay, do I have board members' approval? Mark, yes. Jeff, yes. Ethan, yes. Matt, yes. Myself, yes. So that's unanimous. Okay, Jeremy, do we have any comments?
No, no comments from the public on this.
Okay, so I make a motion to close a public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Matt, yes. Okay, all those in favor on the board?
Hi.
Jeff, yes. Ethan, yes. Mark, yes. Myself, yes. So I get everybody. Okay. Okay, at this point, excuse me, we can start going through the approval criteria. One line item at a time.
In this one, can you acknowledge that you received the sign offs from the fire chief, the police chief and the public works director? Just as a matter of record. I don't know if you saw them. None of them have any comments at all on either project, but.
And Jeannie, in terms of protocol and procedure, when would we incorporate that this is contingent upon MDEP and the NRPA materials being approved? When does that come into our, like, in terms of procedure?
I would do that. I would do that at the end as part of when you do the final approval for a site plan application, make a contingent upon that.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
And Matt, Matt, I hope you have your vocal cords warmed up because we're turning this one over to you.
No way. No, no, no.
No, no, this is, somebody's got to do it. I mean, what if I were out? We would be lost.
No way.
You've got this, you've got this one down.
I'm sorry. I'm merely the, I second your motion, Mr. Shaw.
My microphone's broke.
Borrowed gear. So so I would like to, Jeannie, does this need to be a motion? This acknowledgement that it's been approved and looked at by the various chiefs?
It's just when you get to certain approval criteria, a burden on utilities and public utilities, you could say that and traffic, you can say that you have sign offs that say there's no burden, that there's safe emergency vehicle access based on a letter from the police chief and fire chief, that kind of thing. So when you get to the appropriate criteria, just if you can insert that you receive that, just makes a better record.
Okay. That sounds great. I am just trying to find all my wording here on my phone. Does somebody want, somebody want to start working down these?
Well, Bill, could I ask you to stop sharing this screen so that I can open up other documents?
Sure.
Thanks, Mark.
Also, don't forget that in their application packet, they address why they believe they meet these approval criteria. And you can acknowledge that or not.
Jeannie, do we, or Jeremy, do we also need to go through one line item at a time to review the subdivision and development proposals?
Yeah, you can just do that at the end.
Do we have to address each of those separately?
No, I would just address, I mean, you might as well, Rosie. That's pretty, that's pretty straightforward. Most of those are going to not have any impact. Say, I would say, E, the applicant does need to modify the language. The the signature block to reference, not the zoning ordinance, but within the special flood hazard area. And it's going to comply with article, it's going to comply with the floodplain ordinance. I think he mentioned the zoning ordinance when it needs to talk about, speak to the floodplain ordinance. But I will work with Bill to make sure that language is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jeremy. So, great, so let's, let's get started. Do we, does anybody have any issues with how this preserves and enhances the landscape? It's a round discussion by the board.
I think we've addressed Mr. Shaw's concerns. Mr. Shaw, is that correct?
My microphone, yeah, here it goes.
It's like that selective dad hearing thing, isn't it?
And you passed the test. Well done.
Yeah, I do feel it's, I found both Bill's input, Jeremy's input and Jeff's input to be be very helpful for me to understand and then feel more comfortable with approving under number one.
Okay, would you feel comfortable making a motion?
I will make this motion, but I swear I'm going to pass erosion to Matt because he's got that language down. I move that approval criteria, number one, preserve and enhance the landscape, that the applicant, based on the materials submitted and as represented at the hearing, will preserve and enhance the landscape insofar as practical for a project that is within the purpose and criteria for this, for the BR zone.
Okay, do we have a second on that, Jeff? Okay, all those in favor on the board?
I.
Get I from Matt, I from Ethan. I'm just bouncing across the screen here. I from Jeff, I from Mark. That's unanimous. Okay, number two, erosion control. This is, this is Matt, right? You get this from Matt?
Wow, you're so kind. I would propose a motion for section two erosion control, the approval criteria that based on the professional opinions of Bill Lane that they have satisfied in this application, adequate controls and conditions to avoid erosion on the premises.
We need to be more specific about that particular one and reference the removal of the silt fence and.
Sure, based, so let's start again.
Did you have all the wordage for that, Matt? Because that was quite specific at the time.
I do have the core lex and the, but not Jeremy's absorption of.
So control mix, ECM mix.
Can I just, my understanding of what's going on here is that the core lex is staying and that the note about, the note about the silt fence is going to take, get taken off. And instead of the silt fence, at the toe of the slope, there's going to be erosion control mix, which is wood waste bark mulch. And that's going on instead of the silt fence. Is that correct?
Well, isn't that in addition to?
No, this is instead of the silt fence. It's getting switched because it's going to work better.
Yeah, silt fence needs to be towed into the ground. And it's really hard to do that, especially in an area where you've got existing vegetation. It's hard to maintain. Contractors never get it installed correctly. It sits there forever. If you get a slump, a material slumps down the hill, it'll tear through the silt fence. And then you just, you know, you have no protection. So the erosion control mix berm is a much, much better, much, but much better erosion control device.
There's something else here I'd like to point out is in paragraph B, keeping the duration of the exposure of undisturbed soils to as short a period as possible. I think with the amount of fill that's coming in here, I think that's important to keep an eye on, Jeremy.
Oh, yes.
No, sporadically, you know, bringing in a load of fill. And, you know, I'd like to see it done and stabilized.
Understood. Once, once this project gets all its permits, I will meet with Tom and Bill and we will make sure that, you know, we're doing this appropriately and we're going to be made aware of when they start the project. And we'll be on site throughout to make sure that temporary erosion, I mean, that's a big one. You know, permanent erosion control is one thing. The real problem that affects resources, in my opinion, is the during construction and the temporary erosion control is the real problem.
I agree. I agree. And thank you, Mark, for raising that.
So we'll make sure we'll be on that the whole, all over it.
Yeah, and we're amenable.
So Rosie, I don't have the proper language for those elements to.
I'm happy to do it if you want. Do you want me to? I took notes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Rosie.
So can I make a motion that we approve that that this meets the erosion control barriers needed contingent upon the note about the silt fence being removed. And in its place, a note about erosion control mix added, which will be wood waste bark mulch at the toe of the slope. Does that do the trick? Do I have a second?
And Mark, you were just also asking about maintenance or oversight of the fill. Does that fall into this category, Mark Sigenthaler? Would that be part of this motion as well?
With oversight.
With oversight by the, the town planner in regards to duration of the exposure of the project.
Jen, you want to add that in, gentlemen?
I think that's fine. I mean, I think it's, it's presumed that Jeremy is the oversight on this, but I think Mark's point is, well taken to say with particular attention paid to the temporary, what is it called, the, the soils? Yeah, I think that's, I think that's worth, worth adding in.
Okay, with particular attention paid to site disturbance, potential for erosion during construction due to site disturbance.
Yeah, acceptance.
Would that cover it? Yeah, do I have a second then? We did at one point. It's like, okay, Matt's the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have Ethan, I, Matt, Mark, Jeff, so that's unanimous for number two.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, relationships of proposed building to the environment and neighboring buildings, number three. Do any of the board have anything to comment on? No? Oh. Okay, somebody want to make a motion? Jeff, you've been very quiet. Are you still an official member? Come on, hit that button.
I make a motion that the relationship to the proposed building and the existing environment is harmonious per ordinance.
Oh, I'll second that. All those in favor?
We didn't have him making any motions.
Darth Vader, microphone. All those in favor? Aye to Ethan, Jeff bouncing across here. Do we have aye from Matt, aye from Mark?
Aye.
Yes, okay. Yes, okay, so that's unanimous, number three. Number four, does anybody want to speak to vehicular access? Darth Vader's up still, Jeff. Do you want to speak to vehicular access, parking and circulation?
Why? Yeah, I, in looking at the plans, it looks like it's fine. No real huge changes, the curb cuts exist, so there's nothing, nothing that calls out.
Any, anyone else on the board?
I would just note that in the motion that this, this would probably fall under the purview of the approvals that we have seen in terms of police, fire, and so forth, in terms of vehicle access and circulation.
Yeah. That makes, would that go under there? I mean, it would be certainly one place to put it, wouldn't it?
Yeah, above and beyond emergency vehicle access.
Would you, do you want to make a motion, Matt?
Not at all, but I, I think you're a wonderful chair.
Doing great.
You're doing great.
He has a microphone. That's an easy one. I know you can do that one.
No, I'm good tonight. I'm burned out on the whole, the harmony. After Jeff went harmonious, I don't think I can possibly.
Can we make a motion?
Yes, please, Jeff. Harmonious motion.
I will harmoniously make this motion. I, I make a motion that number four of the approval criteria, vehicular access, parking and circulation is fulfilled, is there is no proposed curb cuts, utilizing existing curb cuts, and the existing street pedestrian arrays, nothing is changing. They're only adding on to the existing within the parcel.
Okay, I'll second that.
Is this where we were going to add the police fire in there?
No, that comes in a separate section.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Good question. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Board member, Mark, Matt, yes, Jeff, Ethan, myself, that's fantastic. I've got you all up on screen at once, that's fantastic. All right. Number five, surface water drainage. Do we have any concerns or issues around this at this point?
There were, and they've been addressed.
Okay. Everybody's good with that?
So I'd like to make a motion.
Attaboy.
Go, Mark.
Surface water drainage issues have been addressed and adequately dealt with.
Okay, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. Okay, Ethan's second. All those in favor? Have Jeff, yes, Matt, yes, Mark, yes, Ethan, yes, myself, yes. Fantastic. Okay, number six, public utilities. Is this where we would address the, the fire chief and police chief of?
Well, I think it's mostly public, public works on this one, isn't it?
Is there any new power poles or such in the plans under?
Well, and water service, but there's no water going to the building, right?
Right.
And it's, he's not on public water.
He is on public water, but this building won't be served by it.
Okay.
And so, Bill, there's no change in terms of the, I mean, I was looking on the plans earlier, it doesn't seem to be, they're not, because we're not running anything, anything out there, there's no change because of the driveways or anything that's being built?
Correct.
Okay.
So I, I almost consider this non-applicable because there's no water in sewer.
And it's not going to have, Bill, there's no, there's no meter, no new meter going out for power, right? It's all under the same meter system?
That's mentioning it's going to be from the sub-panel inside the existing building.
Okay. And hopefully, again, it's Tom Hedstrom on electric, so we hope that...
He doesn't go on electric.
Or else you're in serious trouble.
So I make a motion that Article six, public utilities is non-applicable as there's no water in sewer provided to this new building.
Second, Matt.
Thank you. Like, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Jeff, Mark, Ethan, Matt. Fantastic, thank you, gentlemen. We're moving right along. Special features of development. Are there any that needs to be?
Well, yeah, you're going to have, you're going to have the, the exterior yard there, the gravel coated area that's going to be used for storage and materials and things like that, exposed storage, basically. I don't think that they're a barrier to the project, but I do think they qualify, so it definitely applies.
They're special.
They're so special.
They are special.
And I would, I would add that, you know, the applicant has met the required setback screening requirements.
Okay.
So, the outside storage areas will be screened by the adjacent buildings and plantings.
That, that sounds like that would cover it if everybody else is in line with that.
As well as existing vegetation.
Any chance you can make a motion, Mark? You're already like most of the way there.
I make a motion that the outside storage areas will be screened by the adjacent buildings and plantings, plantings and existing vegetation.
Okay, does that cover us for number seven? Yeah?
I think you want to just add satisfying section seven, or number seven, yeah, of the criteria.
Yeah.
Into section seven, special features for development.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ethan's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Jeff, aye, Matt, aye, Ethan, Mark, me, that's unanimous. Okay, next, number eight, exterior lighting.
There's no, no new exterior lighting planned.
Well, that's not entirely true. There is some exterior lighting, no new standalone exterior lighting, but there is some in the soffits and the doors, but I think minimal and no undue adverse impact, so that was my, my perspective on that.
I would suggest that you include that they will be fully shielded, dark sky compliant or something along those lines.
Oh, this sounds like one of Rosie's motions.
I can do that. You had to just get that in there, I know. Okay, so I make a motion that the exterior lighting on this project meets candid standards for dark sky lighting and that all fixtures will be fully shielded and dark sky compliant.
I will second that.
Second.
Okay, I've got at least one second there, and a third. Okay. And do we, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jeff, Matt, Ethan, Mark, myself. Okay, great, so that's past, emergency vehicle access, number nine.
This is where the letter comes in.
Yeah. So, I can, happy to make a motion about that. Does anybody else have anything else to comment on? We're all happy that, okay. I make a motion that criterion number nine, emergency vehicle access has been satisfied as attested to by letters of approval from the Public Works Director, the Fire Chief and the Police Chief.
I will second that, thank you.
Okay, that's second from Matt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Jeff, Ethan, Mark, Matt, myself. Great. Number 10, here's an easy one. Somebody want to do this one?
I'll get it, I'll get it.
Go, Jeff.
I make a motion that number 10 is not applicable because there's no piers, wars, breakwaters, municipal boat ramps, municipal piers, it's all the piers, causeways, marinas, bridges over 20 feet in length proposed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ethan's a second. All those in favor?
Thank you, Jeff.
Aye, Matt, Jeff, Ethan. We get Mark, Matt. Okay, thank you. Number 11, getting there, design standards. There are, I, I would argue this isn't applicable. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, you're not in those zones.
Right?
Yeah.
So, can I make a motion that Article 11, design standards, are not applicable to this project as we're not in one of the reference zones? Have a second?
Second.
That was Jeff. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Jeff, Ethan, Matt, Mark, myself. Fantastic. Overlay design standards. Somebody want to?
Not in the bars.
Go on, carry it, carry it away, Ethan.
All right. I move that criteria number nine, under 12, does not apply because we are not in the business opportunity zone.
Jeff.
Okay, we have a second?
Yeah.
Jeff seconds it. All those in favor? Aye, Mark, Matt, Jeff, Ethan, myself. Okay. So, I think we've gone through and approved, do we want to approve the floodplain stuff before we approve this as a whole, Jeremy?
We don't do that. We do?
There's one section you do, if it's in my memo, right? The flood procedure, and this would be Article nine, review of subdivision and development proposals. State said the planning board shall, when reviewing subdivisions and other proposed developments that require review under federal, state, or local ordinances, and all projects of five or more acres, assure that, A, all such proposals are consistent with the need to minimize flood damage, all public, B, all public utilities and facilities such as sewer, gas, electrical and water systems are located and construction, constructed to minimize or eliminate flood damage, C, adequate drainage is provided in order to, to reduce exposure to flood hazards, D, all proposals include base flood elevations, flood boundaries, and in a riverine floodplain, floodway data, the determination shall be based on engineering practices recognized by the federal emergency management agency, and I think this one is the critical one. Any proposed development must include a condition of an approval requirement structures on any lot in the development having any portion of its land within a special flood hazard area are to be constructed in accordance with Article six of this ordinance. Such requirement will be included in any deed, lease, purchase and sale agreement or document transferring or expressing any, an intent to transfer any interest in real estate or structure, including but not limited to a timeshare interest. The condition shall clearly articulate that the municipality may enforce any violation of the construction requirement, and that fact shall also be included in the deed or any other document previously described. The construction requirement shall also be clearly stated on any map, plat, or plan to be signed by the planning board or local reviewing authority as part of the approval process. The applicant's design engineer has revised the plan and have added a signature block addressing this construction requirement. I will say that it, it needs a little refinement, that signature block, and I will work with Bill Lane to make sure that is refined before you do sign those, that approval plan. I will say, this project does need a flood hazard permit from our office, and I will be reviewing that permit and issuing a permit if they meet all those requirements. So Bill is in the process of submitting that, so I would recommend you go through these, approve, go through them. Have a motion for each one, or a motion for the whole entirety of Article nine of the floodplain ordinance, and would make a recommendation that you make a contingent upon issuance of the flood hazard permit and review by the code enforcement and planning department, as well as the main DEP's NRPA permit.
Jeremy, did you send that to us at some point?
Yes.
I have it in front of me, that, some of that stuff, yeah.
Okay.
So, gentlemen, do you want to address?
We did talk about it at the pre-APP meeting.
Yep.
I think this is, I think this is doable in one motion.
I do too. I do too. Go ahead.
We, we can be kind of specific in this one, so it's going to be a long one. Sorry, Jeannie, bear with me, but, let me see here. So I move that...
Ethan, I think you could make it as simple as you move that this project will comply with the floodplain hazard ordinance.
Okay. I like that. That was a lot more simple than I was going to do.
That would or has to?
So, will, will, shall, is designed to, and will. How about is designed to and will?
Okay. I would like to make a motion that this project is designed to and will comply with the floodplain ordinance.
I'll second that.
Good one.
Yeah. All right.
Favor.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah.
We have Jeff, Ethan, Mark, Matt, myself, that's unanimous. Fantastic, good job. All right.
Thanks, Jeremy, for bringing that up.
Lovely.
When you do your final motion here for the site plan approval, again, make it contingent upon DEP approval. I would say any state or federal approvals, right? That's going to be DEP. And also contingent upon the issuance of a flood hazard permit from the code and planning office, as well as the approval of a shoreline zoning application.
Whoa.
Okay?
Somebody got that? I've been taking notes, I can have a go at this. Do you want me to have a go?
Take a go at it, yeah. I'm still writing.
I've got about half of that. I need to learn shorthand. Okay. So, I make a motion that we improve the application for this project contingent upon issuance of a flood hazard permit, DEP approval, and any other state or federal approvals needed, and approval of a shoreline zoning application. I get it? All right. Do we have a second? Ethan? Fantastic. All those in favor?
Well done, Rosie.
Aye, thank you. Matt, Jeff, Ethan. We have Mark there, Mark. Fantastic. We're a good team. That's awesome. We didn't have many.
Now, one more on, based on the representation?
And, oh, and based on the records, based on, on the documents that have, that have been represented to us. Does that cover?
As well as a testimony before the board.
As well as a testimony before the board. Thank you. As well as a testimony before the board, thank you.
I'll second that.
In favor.
In favor.
But, that was all part of that one, right, that's not a new one.
No, that's the same, well, we just need to, we need to do it with all the language, so I figure we should probably redo it. Not re-say it, just re-.
Okay.
Confirm it.
Okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
Just a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Ethan, Matt.
Aye.
Aye.
Mark, Jeff, myself, okay, watertight, and above the floodplain elevation.
By six feet.
At least.
Or five, five foot eleven.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill, yes, appreciate that.
Have a good evening.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
What's left, Jeremy?
Few other things. Future meetings, we have November 12th, site visit with Lyman Morse. November 12th, 9:00 AM. Got that?
Hold on one sec, Jeremy, so we'll back up one second, let me catch up to you here. Okay, got it, good.
And November 19th, that's when we will likely hear the Lyman Morse Site Plan application, we'll do content review, all that, a whole full application of the Planning Board in a public hearing that day. November 19th.
And Jeremy, regular time, 5:00 PM, is the goal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that one's in, that one's in pencil right now? Or is it an ink?
It's a question.
It was a question.
It was.
We are anticipating, right, during the sitewalk on the 12th.
Yeah.
And he, they will, we anticipate that we will be doing the public hearing and site review on November 19th. That was contingent upon them getting everything they need to us 15 days prior.
Right, so we don't know yet whether that's happening.
Correct, 15 days prior is not here yet.
Got you, that's what the hedge was for, I just was curious what we were, and also the, any potential of correcting or changing the plans or anything after the sitewalk.
Right, I mean, I think that will really depend upon the extent of, now, the extent of what is, may need to be changed.
Right.
My, like, right, if anything at all, fair.
Right.
You'll also remember the McMillan Warehouse of Ron Colcord Ave, that likely, as I recall now, is being pushed back to the first meeting in December, December 3rd, I think is when it is. He was willing to push that back, we thought that the November 19th hearing with Lyman Morse will likely be a lengthy one, or has the potential to, and Mr. Mr. McMillan was very, very thoughtful, and I appreciate him to push his back to the December. That said, his closing, you remember, he's pushed this closing back, is now, I think, December 10th, or 9th, or 8th, so we do need to expedite that one and move that one along on the 3rd, hopefully, I think everyone, you know, we did have a pre-app with them, with him on it, and he understands, I think, what you need, we'll get there on that one.
And no truth to the rumor that he's researching Maine barn design.
Never know.
I thought he was looking now at Virginia tobacco sheds.
Yeah. Square windows.
I thought it was, I thought it was Frank Lloyd Wright, California cliffside buildings.
You guys like had things to do this evening, now?
All right.
I've got work to do.
Exactly.
All right, now, we need to have, I think, a discussion on public comment, and I think, especially in light of Zoom, we have a process in place for public comment that is just not really working, or it just not as consistent, doesn't match up with our Zoom procedures, so I think, have a, just a discussion about this, and then maybe if the board can take a formal vote on it, I think would be helpful. From, in my opinion, trying to navigate and manage Zoom, where we potentially have, could, could have dozens and dozens of people trying to provide some comment, we will allow people to come into the Zoom, as long as they get okayed first, I will let them in, they have, we're not going to throw out a blank Zoom invite to everyone on earth. They'll have to reach out to us to ask for the Zoom invite, we will get that to them, that said, we have really want to encourage public comment, and we're going to be trying to advertise this as much as possible, public comment in writing ahead of time, so that we can, and I think that public comment should be allowed to come up, up until, for the most part, the meeting time, because we need to be able to manage that, and if, I'm going to encourage people to send me emails for public comment, and I will accept them, for the most part, up to the meeting time. And then people will also be submitting comments on YouTube, have the possibility to do that, if they ask for an invite, because they would like to specifically speak to the board, they will be given an invite to do that, we will make the, these public comment procedures available, we'll publicize them, and we'll get them out there, because it is, you guys do, you know, you review on projects, and then you, you know, you approve or deny a project, it's a very, you know, it's a very important matter that you guys undertake, and it can be very litigious in some instances, we don't want to go there, we want to make sure everyone has the right to comment, and, and to respond, you guys to respond to them, or the, and the applicant to respond to those public comments. So, I just would like you to maybe formally say, yes, this is the policy that we're going to have moving forward under Zoom, is that we are going to encourage the public to submit public comment well ahead of time, in writing to me, I will then share it with all of you, and I will have them prepared to share them with the board at the meeting, and then we will allow people to comment on YouTube, as well as providing comments on Zoom if they're invited into the, into the Zoom meeting. Does that sound good to everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah. I will talk, I've talked to Bill Kelly quite, quite a bit about this extensively, because, you know, up in Belfast, he's a town attorney, we share him with Belfast, and he is in our office twice, twice, twice a week, and we did talk about public comment during Zoom, Planning Board and all this, and we were both thinking it was going to be challenging. You know, moving forward, we haven't had significant projects where people were really wanting to comment, I think Lyman Morse is probably going to be the first one. Belfast has dealt with a number of things, they had a tractor supply built, you know, it's kind of contentious, they had the, the fish farm, obviously, was, is contentious, and lots of public comment has been received in this manner, and it's actually worked out, I think, much better for people, because you actually get to see it, and someone's not up there potentially fumbling their words, trying to get through or make a point that isn't really able to be conveyed all that well. By putting it in writing, it's much easier for you guys to digest, me to digest, and I think the applicants to digest, and, and that's how we'll handle it, does that sound good for everyone?
Good. Jeremy, would you, can you dedicate an email address, you know, CPB comments@camden.gov or something, so there's a...
I will work on that, I will see if we can do that, if I can do that, I will do that.
Yep. Again, it just, it streamlines the process, if everybody's sending to a single, here is where things are received, that have public...
I will work on that.
Okay.
If possible.
Go on, Genie.
Good to you.
I'd like to ask about interested parties, and butters, when I send notices, will be given an opportunity to request interested party status, so they can be invited to the Zoom meeting. Last time you mentioned wanting downtown business owners to also be granted interested party status if they want. That's still what you want, and how, how should we decide who gets it?
I almost, I almost think, Genie, that those kind of, those are the pub, the comments that should come in from the general public, I mean...
That was my thought, too.
And not from a butters, I mean, I think a butter definitely have a, you know, a reason to be in the, in the meeting, but the general public, whether it be interested voters from elsewhere in the midcoasts, you know, or in town, anywhere, I think, I think those should just be general comments from the public, and handle them that way, and not really include them on the invite, unless they have a real reason. If they have a real reason, I'll try to, we'll try to make some space for them, but I think that really ought to come in as general comments, you know, through the...
I agree, it was just brought up last time that they should be given special status, so if that's not what you...
My thought on that was that, instead of, like, Jeremy was just saying, like, anybody interested from the midcoast, if somebody's from the midcoast, and they write a letter to us, I don't think we have to read that out loud in Planning Board unless they're a voting Camden, you know, resident, or a business owner in Camden, and that, to me, was the distinguishing difference, that somebody, a lot of people own businesses in Camden, they don't live in Camden.
Most definitely.
But those, those are the people that I think we deserve to read their comments out loud in the public meeting.
They deserve to have us read them.
Yes.
But, can I get some clarity on how this is actually going to work, is Jeremy proposing at the beginning of the meeting that, are you proposing, Jeremy, that you read all the comments that you've received at the beginning of the meeting in lieu of people standing there in a real life situation, I'm talking?
And, not at the beginning of the meeting, but at the public hearing portion.
At the public hearing portion, you will read all the comments that have been received?
Yes, and we...
Oh my gosh, there could be a couple hundred of them.
Well, you got to include them.
Yeah.
You can enter them in, yeah, we've done it before, and make a list of who they're from, and we can talk about that, but...
Or is there always some way, if it is a lot, Jeremy, is there some way we can help you with that too, as a board, and take it in terms, you know, we all love to talk, so we can take it in terms of read the letters?
Suggest that we, we wait and see what we get for public comment, and if we have a reasonable amount, then, yes, they can be read at the meeting, if it turns out that there's just an unreasonable amount that, that cannot be read at the meeting, then then, then we come up with an alternate solution at that time.
I, I think that's fair, and I think working with Bill Kelly will be able to do that, I mean, we may find that, you know, a handful, you know, a big chunk of these comments may say the same thing.
Exactly.
So, I may be able to go through the comments pretty quickly and say, yeah, this is about, you know, this issue, this is about that issue, and that I can just line them up, and we can say, you know, we've gotten 15 comments all saying the same thing, and here's what it is, and we'll enter them all into the record, but we may be able to just talk about what the general issue is of that group of commenters.
Yeah, and for my part, I'd like to actually read the comments myself, like, I'd like to see, even if you're grouping them into care, to categories, I would like to read them all.
That's fair.
So, Jeremy, then, again, that could be disseminated like you do with a memo.
Yes.
And, and I think you've got it right, Jeremy, incorporated them into the record, and some sort of, you know, statements around the types of comments, or specific comments, whatever, will be warranted, but we may not, I, I think Mark's right, we may not have time to read all of them into the hearing.
Yeah, and again, we'll wait and see, we may, we may have to continue the meeting to another meeting, but, you know, let's see what we get.
Who's our speed reader?
You, Ethan. Thanks for volunteering. So...
Does that sound like a good plan, though?
It, it does, yes.
Do you guys want to, will you guys want to formally kind of vote and agree with that policy?
And I just suggest, though, Jeremy, that when, when you send us the comments, that not sporadically, that it's just, you, you group them together.
Sure.
So, we don't get, they don't get lost.
Understood, will do. Will do.
And that's the only tricky piece about accepting comments right up until the time of the meeting. I mean, again, we probably...
I know, but the reality is, is, you know, in the past, we've have a policy that says you're going to accept written comments, I think, one week prior to the meeting, I think, is what it is, I mean, that day when people could come and, and voice their opinion at the meeting.
Yeah.
Do that today, so we just need to... Okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Somebody?
So...
He's got enough brain cells to make a motion.
I'm not, as discussed, I think you can just come up with it, and I, I mean, we can do it, go ahead.
I guess the point we're trying to make here is that we are due to, due to the Zoom meetings, we will we will accept public comments up until the time of the meeting.
Yeah. Written, yeah.
Written, written comments.
Yeah.
And Jeremy, so you, between you and Genie, you will screen the comments and determine who can actually participate in the meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
How, by where they're from, you mean?
Yeah, if there are butters, I think, Genie, we're going to go with a butters, I think is the best way to do it, to actually bring people into the meeting.
Right, that's one thing, but...
Can we just say that they have standing?
Right, but I'm trying to figure out what Mark just said, that screening them to see who...
Well, I think, Genie, he just didn't want, you know, the person that lives up on, you know, Beau Care Avenue, you know, that Beau Care Road, that just, is just some interested citizen that wants to comment on it. I think that's Mark, you were saying.
So, let me reword that, that, that between Jeremy and Genie, you will determine who has standing to be invited to the meeting.
To participate is as in the Zoom?
Yeah.
Do, uh...
I would, I would, I would avoid that standing language personally.
You got to be careful.
This, it gets into sounding legalese, and I, I would be worried about making a legal motion.
But don't the butters have standing?
A butters, definitely, but I would just, I would not, I would not want to argue that whoever lives up on Beau Claire Avenue does not.
Well, they'd have to make an argument that they did, I think.
I know, I know, but then you're making a legal determination.
Well, why don't you let, let, let staff, along with the town attorney, determine who is going to, who's going to be represented in person?
Yeah, I think that's the way to put it, I think that's the way to put it.
Okay, we'll do that. Other than that, everyone else will get comment to us in writing.
Yeah, short circuiting the whole motion, just say, as Jeremy suggested, moving that as discussed at the Planning Board meeting on October 29th, comments will be received in writing for the Zoom meetings unless a person is invited into the meeting based on a determination by staff and the town attorney.
Perfect.
Oh, all right, I'll second that.
But, received up until the time of the meeting.
And received up until the time of the meeting, thank you, Mark.
And then comments will also be taken on YouTube during the meeting.
Comments will also be taken on YouTube during the meeting.
Perfect.
Okay. We got it all? Okay.
Yeah.
So, I'll second that, all those in favor? Mark, yes, Matt, yes, Ethan, yes, Jeff, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And these, that anybody who has standing and is invited to this public hearing, will they be allowed to speak at the meeting? Or will they just be listening?
They will be allowed to speak during the public comment period, the public hearing portion, I will be controlling their ability to speak or not speak, I will let them into the room or out of the room, so we won't have multiple people saying, trying to speak over people like I sometimes do to you all.
So, I'll hand that part of the meeting over to you, and you'll be making the determination about who's speaking next?
Sure, yep.
I mean, that, I just want to get clear about who's doing that, so we don't look like complete idiots.
I will be the host.
We need that presidential mute button for Jeremy. Presidential debate.
All right.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to close the meeting?
Please.
Yeah.
You guys had enough yet? Is there any, anything else? We're done, right?
Done, like a roast turkey, we're done.
All right, I make a motion to close the Planning Board meeting.
I second that.
On 10, 10:29, 2020, Jeff seconds, all those in favor?
Senders out.
There we go, Ethan out, Matt out.
Go.
I'm sure Mark's out, are we, yes?
Jeff, is this your last meeting, or are you with us for some more?
I'm here until the end of the year.
Right, Lyman Morse, you're going to do that one?
I'm going to get one more round of that fancy cake Genie makes.
It's worth the price of admission.
You never know, you might get to stay another year if it's really good cake.
I'll just come back for the cake.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
My weekend.
I mean, I think it's important to have...
Who was your helper, Jeff? Who was your helper, Jeff? You had a helper for a while. Is he gone? Oh, well.
My- What are we talking about?
Your son, who sat on your lap earlier.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. He's gone.
It seems like you took, it seems like you took the drone with him. That's good.
Yeah, he's eating.
Um.
And you're not.
I would say for Jeff, since he heard the McMillan pre-application meeting and the Lyman pre-app meeting, he probably ought to stay through those two, which will get us through December.
That's the Hotel California, yeah.
I've had another couple of ones by then, which I'll have to stay for.
Meeting adjourned.
Take care.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thanks.